2015, at 6:00 PM. Mayor Sanders is in Washington DC representing the city at a MAPPA conference. What we'll do is we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance and then please stay standing for the invocation by Pastor Mario Hatcher, Bellevue Christian Center, 1400 Harville Drive, Bellevue. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much for this opportunity. Let's pray. Father, we just want to thank you for this evening and Lord, we just pray that your presence will be welcomed here tonight and decisions that are to be made, God, thank you that they will be made by men and women who you have appointed to these seats. Father God, we thank you that you've placed all governing authorities and the positions that they're in and we just thank you that we can trust them with those decisions. We pray your grace and patience tonight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you Pastor. Item number two, call to order and roll call, Sabrina?
Mr. Carmichael?
Here.
Mr. Hanson?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Preister?
Here in person.
Mr. Modri?
Here.
Mrs. Blood?
Present.
Thank you. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. A copy of the act is on the wall in the back of the City Council chambers. Item number three, approval of minutes and advisory committee reports. 3A, approval of agenda. Do you have a motion? Mr. Carmichael?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Carmichael, seconded by Mrs. Blood. Is there any discussion? Please vote. I vote yes.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item number 3B, Mr. Preister?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We got a motion by Mr. Preister, seconded by Mrs. Blood. Is there any discussion? Mr. Modri?
Yes, we had some discussion this afternoon in pre-council meeting. I was going to offer a motion to remove the approval of last meeting's regular council meeting minutes from the consent agenda, but I'm not going to do that. I felt that a couple of points of discussion important, that I thought important points of discussion were not included in the agenda. However, you know, the purpose and intent of the agenda is really to capture motions and actions against those motions. So, I won't make that motion, but I will encourage everybody to check out the video from the last meeting and for all the meetings really, to get a complete understanding of the discussion that does take place in the meetings.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. I will vote yes.
All voted yes.
Item 3C, the approval of the minutes of the January 20th, that's consent, I'm sorry. Item number 3D is also consent. Item number 3E, tree board report. Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Councilman Cook. We have the annual report and with us today is one of the tree board members to present it, Thomas Bentley. So, Tom, if you would please come up and present the report. We have two other tree board members, former City Councilman Dave Sanborn is also here with us and Dave Anson, tree board member as well, who are here. I think those are the only other two, but we thank you for being here and your service. Tom, if you, you might pull that microphone back down and...
Oh, I just speak taller. Good evening, my name is Tom Bentley, address 11730 Fisher House Road and want to thank you for the opportunity to speak and participate in delivering the report. Beginning with, a thank you on behalf of the board for the unanimous approval of the updated city tree ordinance. Included in that ordinance which was developed this year was a mitigation plan for assessing damaged or destroyed trees by various unintentional acts or improper intentional acts and so that is now a part of the tree ordinance. This has been a good year. This is my first year and has been a very good experience. I've been pleased to meet my other tree board members and I'd like to say that the composition of the members this year, in this current term, do consist of people who take the proficiency and knowledge of trees and tree life into their locations, be it arborist, tree farmer, tree grower, myself as a landscape architect. So, as we view the different matters of discussing trees and the urban conditions for the city of Bellevue, it's a top-down, all the way from the urban planning macro view, all the way down to the physiology of the tree. We have complementing disciplines and aspects on how we view our urban spaces. That kind of leads into absolutely the value that we place. Many people place either environmental value or even economic value on the benefit of trees and we definitely with the city of Bellevue have our forested areas, our urban tree areas and open parklands and absolutely we need to look at our trees as natural resource much as we do our stormwater management is also our tree management. It not only beautifies, but there are, you know, several case studies and lists and tabulations of energy savings that happens with trees, property value increases that happen with trees, desire of people to want to be in our natural spaces that oftentimes consist of trees. And so, as we've developed our city and grown our city, the trees and stormwater systems and all this handle themselves when they're in the back of beyond, but then as we introduce development and human element to the equation and take away things such as fire and disrupt the way stormwater manages itself naturally, then it comes, becomes a resource that has to be managed as a way of sustaining its benefit. And so, I believe that would be a role of what the tree board tries to do in volunteer fashion to assist the council and the city departments. Some of the positive things that took place this year, beginning with green organizing and collaborating with Green Bellevue volunteers as well as city staff, 29 trees were planted in Hayworth Park, park which lost near 400 trees in the flood of 2011. So, that's a wonderful way to start bringing it back. Nine in Southgate Park, 10 at the library and then two Arbor Day and the Big Garden, 200 at Bellevue West. So, a total of 260 new trees within the calendar year of 2014 and 910 total trees planted within the community over the last five years. In addition, we've had opportunity for not only volunteer and in-kind services, we've seen donations from local business people such as mulch donations and case of 2014, $4,300 was donated by Kimball Tree Service, who also serves as a tree board member. And so, there are several positive things that I believe the tree board has been able to do in its voluntary fashion and certainly within this last year, the customary agencies, Nebraska Forest Service, foundations such as Arbor Day certainly do acknowledge and recognize our existence, which is nice. And then looking forward to the next year is to continue to compound on what has taken place since the formation of the board and in the previous five years of contributions and cumulative volunteer hours with an associated value amount placed to that, approximately 294, 562 have been results of activities and actions by the tree board and the citizens of Bellevue. And so, we would like to continue that momentum and under the wait there's more category as we move into this next calendar year of 2015 with the tree board, we're looking at finalizing and bringing before you a tree management plan and in particular within that plan, an emergency response plan. We all know about the urban ashbore that's going to be coming and so that's one of those predicted management plans forthcoming, but like we saw in 97, a rapid tree event or snow event, I'm sorry, a snow or storm event can call us into action with no choice but to figure out how do we deal with all the downed and damaged. So, I think as we help contribute and begin that dialogue with city departments and facilitate in any way we can in the role that we're provided is to can you develop those means, methods and efficiencies on how we can continue to have the value and the management of our natural resource. So, with that, we'll take any questions and if they're above me, Mrs. Mike Francis, Park Superintendent is here as well.
Do you have any questions? Mr. Preister?
Just a comment, Tom, I appreciate you did a very thorough job and a good job and we have all the information of all the listed items on our agenda with the actual report that the tree board put together. So, my thanks to you for volunteering to present it as we have a new board member doing it each year and thanks to Mike Francis who has been our liaison and a good coordinator with the city. I know that Jeff Roberts has been very concerned about Emerald Ashbore, about the oak trees in the cemetery that are dying and the tree management plan that you referred to to help deal with those catastrophes and eventual expenses so we can manage and budget them are extremely important. But, the other thing I wanted to comment on is that you highlighted the professionalism of the board members and I just want to take time to read. Mary Anna Anderson is a certified arborist with the Nebraska Arborist Association and with the International Society of Arboriculture. She was the longtime UNO Extension Agent for Douglas and Sarpy County and just retired. Tremendous expertise that she brings to our tree board. Dave Anson was the founder manager of the BIG or the Big Garden in Omaha for years, helping people to do community gardens. Graham Erbst is a certified arborist, works for the State of Nebraska Forest Service and has this regional area as the community forestry specialist. Dave Sanborn, our former council member, is a certified tree farmer and still manages a tree farm. Lisa Swanson is a certified naturalist, master gardener and UNL Extension Service trained person. Alan Weiss just rotated off and Tom took his place. He had a nursery and is a certified nurseryman with the Nebraska State and is also a Nebraska statewide arboretum board member. You're a landscape architect and Craig Kimball is a certified arborist and also owns a tree service. So, we have a broad spectrum of very professional people giving professional level skills that don't really get much thanks, but I'm here to appreciate the contribution that you're all making to make our community a better and safer one, keeping our trees. So, my comment is to say thanks and grateful Bellevue to you and to the tree board members.
Thank you. It's a good way to spend our volunteer time.
Good.
Mr. Bradley, thank you for presenting your report.
Yes, sir.
Please pass on to the board members our appreciation of all the hard work and time they put in and if anybody wants to read your report, the report presented is attached to our agenda on the website. It's very detailed and very impressive. So, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you all.
Item number four, approval of claims was under consent. Item number five, special presentations, none. Item number six, liquor licenses, none. Item number seven, ordinances for adoption, third reading, none. Item number eight, ordinances for public hearing, second reading, 8A. Ordinance number 3801, authorizing up to $7,250,000 of the city's development revenue funding bond series 215 issued in conduit revenue bonds to refinance improvements to Bellevue University's administration building and its related costs and approving forms of related documents. Sorry? Sabrina, read the ordinance, please.
Ordinance number 3801, an ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of up to $7,250,000 in aggregate principal amount of development revenue refunding bonds, Bellevue University project, series 2015. Approving the execution and delivery of a trust indenture between the city and UMB Bank, North America, a loan agreement between the city and Bellevue University, a Nebraska nonprofit corporation and an agreement to purchase among the city, Bellevue University and the purchaser of the 2015 bonds. Approving and authorizing certain related documents, making certain determinations, prescribing the form of said bonds, providing for the pledging of revenues as payable under said loan agreement, providing for the call of the refunded bonds for redemption, determining that said bond shall not constitute nor give rise to any pecuniary liability of the city or a charge against its general credit or taxing powers and providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Thank you. There is a note here that legal counsel requests a statutory ruling, rule required in readings on three different days be suspended and a vote taken at this meeting. I'm going to ask...
First?
Okay. I need to open this up for public hearing. Would anybody like to speak for or against this ordinance?
Good evening, council members. Parker, Schenkin, Barrett Holmes, 1700 Farnham Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I'm here as bond counsel representing Bellevue University, visited with most of you on January 12th, I believe, and gave a preliminary presentation. The ordinance came before you on first reading a couple of weeks ago and tonight procedurally as council president mentioned, we're looking at a second reading and then if it's your will, a potential waiver of the three reading rule and final passage. I'm happy to go into as much or as little detail as you'd like about the documents. I had a chance to tell the story a couple of weeks ago. Bottom line is this is a financing mechanism that state and federal law permit, which allow the bonds, which effectively represents the loan from the bondholder who is UMB Bank to Bellevue University, to bear interest at a tax exempt rate that is lower than an ordinary taxable rate, allowing Bellevue University to lower their borrowing costs and be more efficient in carrying out their mission. The documents before you are similar to documents that you've approved in the past. 2005, there was the initial transaction done under this structure. 2010, there was a refinancing transaction similar to this structure and then 2010 also was the issuance of the bonds that we're refunding right now or refinancing, which built the newer addition on the administration building on the old Kmart site. And the difference between this transaction and one thing that makes it a lot simpler is it's what's called a direct placement where UMB Bank has come up as the single bondholder and they're going to buy the entire bond, which means they're going to loan that money to Bellevue University. There is no disclosure document, there's none of the process that we went through in some of the other documents, which leads to a lot more streamlined process. I'll take questions at this point. I know many of you have heard the story before and I'm happy to respond to any questions. So, yes, sir.
Mr. Preister?
Thank you. I may have misunderstood what you were saying. Is, bonds are going to be issued and one purchaser is going to buy all of them? Are those going to be sold then to the public?
No.
Or is that, so there won't even be, if somebody wanted to invest in the university, they couldn't even buy them?
Not on this transaction. They may choose to do other publicly offered transactions, but in this context, in the refunding, the bank approached them with a very competitive rate for a single purchase and it worked out well.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
And the university will pay all that back?
They will.
So, the city is just being kind of a fiduciary agent, allowing the transaction?
And it's really, the word conduit means conduit. It's a pass-through transaction, the documents and the statutes that we're operating under, both expressly say that the city is not liable to pay these bonds.
That's what the taxpayers want to hear.
Yep, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? And I forgot to mention, I've got Jerry Blazek and Debbie K. Ward with me if anyone has questions from the university side of things, so.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you all very much.
Would anybody else like to speak to this ordinance? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Do you have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the statutory rule that requires the reading on three different days and that we go ahead and take the vote at tonight's meeting.
I'll second.
Motion made by Councilwoman Blood and seconded by Councilmember Carmichael. Any further discussion? Please vote. I vote yes.
All voted yes.
Councilwoman Blood?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number 3801, authorizing up to $7,250,000 of the city's redevelopment revenue refunding bond series 2015 issued as a conduit revenue bond to refinance improvements to Bellevue University's administration building and any related costs and approving the forms of related documents.
Got a motion by Councilwoman Blood, seconded by Councilmember Preister. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. I vote yes.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item number nine, ordinances for introduction, first reading, 9A. Sabrina, please read ordinance number 3802.
Ordinance number 3802, an ordinance to amend sections 5.22 and 5.23, ordinance number 3619, Bellevue zoning ordinance relating to community centers. To repeal such sections as heretofore existing, to provide an effective date of the ordinance and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
I'm going to read what it's about. I know you just did, but it says amending the zoning ordinance by adding community center as a permitted use in the BG and BGM zoning districts. The second reading will be conducted on Monday, February 23rd. Item 9B, ordinance number 3803, rezoning lot 115 child acres, estate acres from RS 72 to RE for the purpose of allowing the construction of an accessory structure up to 3,000 square feet in size. Applicant is TJ Wiles. General location is 25th and Rose Lane Road. Sabrina, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance number 3803, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska as provided for by Article 3 of ordinance number 3619, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about 25th Street between Rose Lane Road and Virginia Street, more particularly described in Section 1 of the ordinance and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. The second reading will be here at the city council on Monday, February 23rd. Item 9C, ordinance number 3804, authorizing the transfer of tax lot X2 located in Section 26T14R13 at Bellevue University. Sabrina, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance number 3804, an ordinance providing for the conveyance of certain real estate, same being described in Section 1 of this ordinance, directing the conveyance of such real estate and the manner and terms thereof and designating an effective date.
Thank you. The second reading will be on February 23rd, 2015. Item number 10, public hearing on matters other than ordinances. Number 10A, conditional use permit, application to erect an 84-foot monopole communication tower. Applicant is Joe Coyle, location 1409 Thurston Avenue, Bellevue West High School. Is there someone here?
Hi, my name is Jenny Byrd. My address is 7755 Reed's Road in Prairie Village, Kansas, 66208. I'm actually here tonight on behalf of Joe Coyle, representing SBA Communications Corporation. SBA is proposing an 80-foot monopole with an eight-foot lightning rod in correction to the agenda on a small portion of space at the Bellevue West High School. Since this is a site for data capacity, the search area given by the RF engineers was incredibly small, so we could not co-locate on a neighboring tower .3 miles away. Any questions this time? I believe everything is in our conditional use application citing all of the conditional use points being met.
Would you please sign in?
Oh.
And then Councilmember Preister will have some questions.
Thank you.
Actually, I was just going to say it's my old city clerk coming out in me. I was a former city clerk in Omaha and I was going to ask you to please sign in so the clerk had the information, but our good acting mayor already beat me to it.
Thank you.
A little help.
Last time it was ever there, so I thought maybe I was, maybe we did things different at the council meeting, so thank you, I apologize.
Does anybody have any questions?
Okay.
I will open up for public hearing. Would anybody like to speak for or against this conditional use application? Seeing no one coming forward, I'll close public hearing. I'm sorry ma'am, I do have, this is the Bellevue Public Schools has approved?
Yes.
For this on their site?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Mr. Carmichael? Oh, I'm going to close public hearing. Mr. Carmichael?
Thank you, Councilman Cook. I'd like to make a motion to approve the conditional use permit application to erect an, did you say an 80-foot or 84-foot?
80-foot was an eight-foot lightning rod, so 88 total.
An 88-foot monopole communication tower at the location 1409 Thurston Avenue.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Carmichael, seconded by Mrs. Blood. Any further discussion? Please vote. I will vote yes.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item 10B, approval of the final plat for Ashford Hollow North. Is there a representative here?
Doug Kellner, Thompson, Dresen Dorer, here on behalf of the applicant, available to answer any questions that you have.
Why don't you sign in for us, please? Well, then I'll open up for public hearing. Would anybody like to speak for or against this approval of the final plat for Ashford Hollow North? I see no one coming forward, we'll close public hearing. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Carmichael?
I'd like to make a motion for approval of the final plat for Ashford Hollow North.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Carmichael, seconded by Mrs. Blood. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. I will vote yes.
All voted yes.
Item 10A1, approval of the subdivision agreement, 10B1, approval of the subdivision agreement for lots 1 through 53 and outlots A and B, Ashford Hollow North. Mr. Preister?
Thank you, Councilman Cook. Do we need to have a presentation in the public hearing first?
We didn't clarify for both, let's open up another one.
Okay, and then I will make a motion.
I will open up for public hearing. If anybody would like to speak for or against the subdivision agreement. Seeing no one coming forward, we'll close public hearing. Mr. Preister?
I will make the motion to approve the subdivision agreement for the lots 1 through 53 and outlots A and B of Ashford Hollow North that's part of Ashford Hollow North.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Preister, seconded by Mrs. Blood. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, please vote. I will vote yes.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item number 11, resolutions. 11A, resolution number 2015-03, designating the city Bellevue Bicycle Club's annual Rite of Silence on May 20th, 2015 from 7:00 to 8:00 PM as a special event for the closure of a portion of Highway 370 from 42nd Street east to the northbound exit lane of Fort Crook Councilwoman Blood?
Yes, motion to approve, resolution number 2015-03.
Got a motion by Councilwoman Blood, seconded by Councilman Preister. Is there any discussion? Mr. Preister?
Briefly, just out of respect to bicycle riders who are out on the road, it's good that the public is aware that they're there and pays attention, so we don't have any more needless tragedies of people being injured and in some cases, a valuable teacher who was actually killed and two of those deaths have occurred right in the Bellevue area. So, we all share the road and it's important that we pay attention to other people around us and be as safe as we can. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, please vote. I will vote yes.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item number 12, current business. 12A is under consent. 12B is under consent. 12C is under consent. 12D is under consent. 12E, approval of the low bid from Cunningham Recreation in the amount of $76,088.82. $72,948.76 FEMA reimbursement, $3,140.06 from the park fund for the replacement of two shelters at Hayworth Park and authorize the mayor to sign the contract. Councilwoman Blood?
Yes, motion to approve specifically making that change of the $3,140.06, not coming from community betterment, but coming from the park fund.
Motion by Councilwoman Blood, seconded by Councilmember Preister. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, please vote. I vote yes.
All voted yes.
Thank you. 12F, approval of sale and purchase agreement between Two Springs Development Corporation and the city of Bellevue. Councilwoman Blood?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Councilwoman Blood, seconded by Councilman Carmichael. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. I vote yes.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item 12G, approval of the citizen code of conduct policy. Councilwoman Blood?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we postpone until the March 9th meeting, so additional input can be given by council members to administration.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Blood, seconded by Mr. Preister. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. I vote yes.
All voted yes.
Item number twelve H, adoption of the city of Bellevue Strategic Planning Report for two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and seventeen. Councilman Carmichael?
Councilwoman.
What?
When you emit some messages, you start with the woman.
Well, Councilman Carmichael.
Thank you, Mr. Cook.
Did I say that wrong? Uh-oh. See, I kept on looking this way.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the adoption of the city of Bellevue Strategic Planning Report for two thousand and fifteen through two thousand and seventeen.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Carmichael, seconded by Mrs. Blood. Mr. Preister?
Thank you. I just wanna say that this is another one of the steps, and I don't wanna just gloss over it, but of professionalizing how we operate the city of Bellevue. We have strategic planning now implemented and appreciated and responded to and followed through, and I think it's really moving the city forward. So I salute all of the council members, the staff, administration, the mayor, for a job well done. I'm looking forward to voting on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please vote. My vote is yes.
All voted yes.
All right. Yeah, give me this. Okay, number, item number thirteen, public request to be heard. Public request to be heard. Any member of the public addressing the council shall abide by Council Resolution Number thirty-five regarding principles of conduct and decorum, which states any statements made during city council meetings by the mayor, members of the city council, city officials, and employees, or members of the general public shall not involve personal.
It came to my attention that Blue Buffalo wants to expand, and that the problem is access. They can't expand on one side because there is a residential area, and the other side is the problems with, with Cornhusker. And they have presented, first of all, they employ like almost fifty people, and it's, my understanding is that they wanna double it. They presented the city a plan about six months ago to solve the problem, which sounds like it's a pretty easy fix. It will also alleviate all the traffic issues that are on Cornhusker and Fifteenth, which is between Bellevue West and Walmart. So, I wanted to talk about that, but I didn't get here in time to get on the agenda, so I will do that next week, but I just thought that was quite a concern, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe this is the time I should, Chuck Frederick, one-five-one-one Madison Street. Maybe this is the time I should test the five minutes, but I'm not gonna try to do that. In today's paper, there's an article by Jordan Pascal, I don't know if you saw it or not, but it talked about younger people not, not appealing to, you know, get involved with political life, and it said here that the Bellevue city council average is sixty-one. Now, way back when some of the people were on the council at that time, wanted to get a very generous raise, one of the arguments was that with that generous raise, a higher raise, that, and that there be, might be more young people who wanna maybe consider getting on the city council. Unfortunately, what you've done is that you've done something to make it so it's less able for these young people to come, and that's your pre-council meetings. You have them twice, once before every meeting, twice a month, and that's one-thirty, and this one lasts, I guess, two and a half hours a day. If you wanna have young people consider being in the council, most of them are gonna be working, and they can't be taking off during the day and get off, maybe some of the older people who are on and have full-time jobs can do that, but younger people won't be able to do that. There was a proposal discussing about whether to drop it or not. I would say, get it on the agenda and vote on it. I think it's time to eliminate the pre-council meetings. The other thing I did during the last week was I added up the, the legal expenses for the last year, and my totals I have, I think they're pretty accurate, but I could be off a little bit, but for our contracted attorney, it was two-hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand four-hundred-and-six dollars. Our total legal fees were three-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars, three-hundred-and-five dollars and seventy-six cents. I've been proposing a long time to have a full-time city attorney, instead of a contracted one. Mayor Black did this a couple of years back, not at the end of election period, but during his, during a term, one of his terms, he eliminated the contracted attorney, got the full-time city attorney, he hired a second, he hired a second city attorney, assistant one, and those legal fees were less than what the contracted attorney was. I think it's really time, you're gonna have maybe a situation coming up next meeting where you're gonna be appointing officials, and I certainly hope you seriously consider getting a full-time city attorney. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I wanna talk today about the Heartland twenty-fifty project that was presented last week by Greg Yule. I see some concerns with it, just not for Bellevue, but our total eight-county district here, and I'm gonna go some, through some of the language, I think that's kind of scary when it comes to people who enjoy liberty and, you know, individual rights and everything like that. And some of the stuff in their five-packet plan they got here, I've read it all, I sure hope everyone else has, 'cause it is quite lengthy and redundant, but they have stuff in there that says grow responsibly. Well, who decides who grows responsibly? Is it the individuals, or is it the government, or this action plan pushed by government funding, federal government funding, plate people like MAPPA and HUD, and then phony front groups of businesses that get government grants to help grow responsibly? Manage growth, I don't want any type of government or organization managing my future growth, or our city needs to grow. If you look at the total population of the US of A, I think five percent of it is developed, and so I don't think we really need to concern about managing our growth as in infill, as much as they're talking about. Work in a well-planned, walkable community, I'll get into more stuff that they have there. Local government should support emerging business sectors, infrastructure, transportation, and healthcare. That's, once again, all, I mean, I'm all for infrastructure and transportation, and now of course healthcare, 'cause of the, the federal government, Obamacare, but that's just more government money and more centralized power for the government. Land accu, accu, I can't say it, land acquisition plans, take from individual landowners for government public use. They want to implement cradle-to-career educational system, which means pre-K to post-four-year colleges, you know? I'm all for education, but to keep subsidizing kids like we already are with the student loan program, and, and try, now try to make this a thing where local governments try to help kids go out. I think it's a bad route, 'cause that bubble's get a burst for the federal government like the housing bubble did. Efforts including equitable distribution of resources, distribution, who decides distribution? That's kinda like wealth distribution. Less dependent on cars, so when they talk about that, they're good to try to make transit and different stuff, so you eliminate car usage, and we all know car usage is one of the main things to get around in all busy, cities. Let's go to some other. Develop model ordinance provisions for urban, suburban, and rural developments to encourage infill. Kinda sounds like institute zoning and building codes that offer greater flexibility for development. Kinda would mean if you're trying to bird westward, build westward, they might put zoning or restriction laws on you, so you can't build as big a house, or can't build that way, 'cause they wanna encourage more infill, which leads to encourage higher-density residential, commercial, and industrial corridors, so everyone's closer, so they can have a walkable community, and in the report, they want ten thousand steps in everybody's daily life. I'm all for fitness, but if I wanna work, if I wanna walk five hundred steps or fifty thousand steps, it's, you know, my choice, I shouldn't have to be forced, because I can't take my car, because there's only public transportation routes, and stuff like that. I'll get to some other stuff here, but I wanna read what Utah's doing, 'cause this is, they reference this to their Heartland twenty-fifty website, Utah and Chicago. Utah has presented Clean Air Action Team twenty-fifteen recommendations. Reduce the amount of wood burning that occurs during inverse periods, eliminating residential wood burning. So they basically, it's cold like it is, was a couple of weeks ago, in December, they wanted to reduce your wood burning. How do they do that? They tax you, they come after you, they put in regulations. Chicago Action Plan, provide grants and technical assistance, grants. Where do grants come from? Usually federal government and government agencies, and this is just a big, unfortunately, I think it's bad for Bellevue and the surrounding communities, 'cause it's more of a, to me, a centralization of this, not our little government, but to give the federal government more power by helping them, you know, push the, just basically control us. And so I would encourage everyone on the council to really read up on this, and I, I, I don't fully support it at all, because I just think it's trying to control us, the people, and I think we really need to vet people like Greg Yule and be careful with these action plans and steps moving forward. So, I'm gonna keep reading into this, and read their Utah plan, their Sacramento plan, their Chicago plan, and read more about the UN Agenda twenty-one, 'cause this is kinda what it's based off of, and really keep presenting this at the council, 'cause I think it's a big issue for our future growth.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak? I will close the public request to be heard. Councilwoman Blood?
Motion to adjourn.
Who was the second? Was that done? Okay. Motion by Councilwoman Blood, seconded by Councilmember Preister. Please vote. Just real quick, oh, I vote yes.
All voted yes.
Upcoming events, Monday, February sixteenth is President's Day, the city offices will be closed, and our next meeting will be Monday, February twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen. Thank you and good night.